My paper on the front page. This is Monday, January 9, 2017 at 4:30 PM. This is a work session. We're going to run right downhill except for we will start with a couple of the presentations so that way you guys can get in and out of the way. So, Ms. Walsh, would you like to come first and give us your presentation? And Mr. Hutchinson, we'll have you go right after she finishes.
Hi. My name is Lisa Walsh. I am a member of the Iowa-Mississippi River Parkway Commission. I am Des Moines County's representative for the 10 counties that are along the Mississippi River. What I need to do today was present you with a new copy of the corridor management plan that was prepared at the end of the year and it kind of gives the agenda for the upcoming deal with the Iowa-Mississippi River Parkway. Mayor, you have done a nice job representing Burlington and doing the welcoming for this group which did a tourism meeting in March of 2015. In addition to giving you this, I want to call your attention to the new signs that are being put on the Great River Road. You'll see there's some new signage that was started back in 2014 and there's still some process of getting it done. They've had some logistic problems, plus they fired, the DOT fired the commissioner on the contractor on the job, so they're kind of behind the times on that. Also, I'm going to give you a business card. The Iowa is going to be having their national meeting. Iowa-Mississippi River Parkway's national powers are in Madison, Wisconsin, and they meet quarterly and usually in the spring and the fall. Iowa will be hosting the national meeting. The national meeting is going to be up in the Driftwood, up in Lansing because they've decided, the commissioners decided that it was an area that people hadn't been and there's probably 60 to 100 people that will travel from the 10 states. And the past, they've had the meeting in Clinton, Davenport, and Dubuque. And so it was an area that they hadn't been and they felt that it was important that they went somewhere different and, you know, gave people a different experience and a different perspective. The meeting this spring will be in Patuke, Kentucky. But I've got really one question to ask you. I attended a meeting in La Crosse, Wisconsin in 2000, last year, last spring. And the mayor gave the address. The mayor was, had an economic development background. There's a group called the Mayors on the Rivers. And when we were in Mississippi for the national meeting this fall, they were very disturbed that there's no representation from Burlington on this mayor's on this commission. The national meeting in 2018 will be in the Quad Cities. There's a lot of good use that I was told by a lot of the mayors. Dubuque, Clinton, Davenport, Musketeen, they're pretty much all have representation. And I encourage you to look at it. The mayor of La Crosse told me point-blank that they felt that they could not have got a lot of their restructuring done where they have five hotels on the riverfront and the cleaning of the riverfront and also just flood, you know, planning and so forth. And they told me basically there's no fee. They're in the process of restructuring. I believe the mayor of Clinton and Dubuque are both kind of in or on the executive committee. But I just encourage you because to me, being a river community, that I think it's too bad that Burlington doesn't have a representation on them. So that's basically all. So I'll just leave you my card. I am on the transportation committee of the Iowa-Mississippi River Parkway. And so as on that, my jurisdiction is on the Cascade Bridge and also the Mount Rose problem down the road. So it's just as I said, you know, basically all I'm here to is just thank you for your support, but do hope you do consider and reach out to those people because that national organization was pretty empowering when we were in Mississippi and the things that they were able, that they're working on. And all the other cities in the Iowa-Mississippi River Parkway have representation.
We don't want to be old, Em. All right. Thank you, Lisa.
So I will just leave these for you and you can distribute them. And if you have any questions, my phone number and cell phone is on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, just leave it down. Is that all right? We're going to have so much other stuff hanging out here.
All right. Good afternoon. Jason Hutchinson, you know me from my day job with the Greater Burlington Partnership, but today I'm representing the Imagine Group or subgroup of the Imagine on the indoor sports facility. Joe O'Brien is here with me tonight as well. He's joined our team. I realize it's been a little bit since I've given you an update on where we're at in the process, so I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to give you some update on where we're at in the process and then some things to expect down the road. So just, I know that you know this, but why are we doing this really was a community request out of the Imagine visioning process to extend the visitor season and also solve a need for additional practice facilities within our community. Last time I was here to see you, you released some dollars for us to do some engineering and some architectural renderings of a facility. So this is an example of some of the work that we received back. This gives you some idea of a rendering of the facility. And as mentioned before, it will have, the intent is for one side to be turf for soccer or other turf-related sports, and then the other side to be basketball, convertible to volleyball, you could have wrestling if you pulled out mats, all sorts of those things. And to give you some idea, what we wanted to do was kind of optimize the square footage so ensure that we have a facility that meets the needs and also allows us to hold large tournaments. But also, when you pay, every square foot that you add to it increases the cost. And so we really worked on optimization and that took quite some time. But where we're at right now is really two full-size collegiate basketball courts with cross-court capability so you can have four playing surfaces for youth sports at the same time and then that turf field as well. The center spine is really the hook to the facility. It allows for spectator space and mingling space. And then the last thing is an elevated track. And the elevated track could be used for walking, but more importantly, it's there for mezzanine viewing space because if you've gone to any of these events, typically the best areas have spots where little kids can run around. Sometimes they have a hard time sitting for a long game and also you've got parents that like to stand up and lean and watch the activity down below as opposed to just sitting on bleachers. And so that's why it's designed. Right now, it's not designed around the entire facility, but these are concept drawings and so the final facility may or may not look exactly like this, but this gives you some idea of the flair that we're going for, kind of a side view of the basketball courts and a side view of turf as well, again, designed with the spectator in mind. We know that for this facility, we're going to have to offer a really good fan experience because we're going to have to get teams from the larger metro areas to come here for a tournament. And so our facility has to be just a little bit better than your average facility out there. And so this whole facility's design has that fan experience in mind. Total square footage is around 65,000 square feet, so that includes all of the base level space and then the second level elevated space as well. And this demonstrates for you that it is anticipated to be directly adjacent to the existing SCC gymnasium. So this is a grassy area just west of SCC. It is not approved by the Board of Trustees yet to construct this facility, but we're working through that. So this is our proposed location, anyway. So why SCC? Really, some of the biggest reasons, joint parking, they already have parking there so we could save the expense of putting a new parking lot in that space. And that parking usually isn't utilized in weekends as much as it is during the week. Also, it allows us to increase the square footage for playing tournaments dramatically on the same site. There's an existing SCC gym. Yes, it's used a lot by the college, but there are times that it's not being utilized. And so this facility can run additional games on that side as well without the expense of building a third gymnasium. So we were actually able to shrink the size of this, bring down the cost by also utilizing that gymnasium. It also will help in the college's goals of talent recruitment. Certainly, there will be times during the week when SCC students are going to have access to that through a joint shared-use agreement, and so it's going to be a great thing for the college. And quite frankly, their willingness to partner on this project has been a huge help as well. So to give you some insight on the governance and operations, we do envision this being owned, the building itself being owned by a private nonprofit organization. That organization has not yet been established, but we're in bylaw drafting phase and board member recruitment phase. It is intended to have an independent board of directors, so while there will be representatives from a variety of interests, it's designed to be independent and not controlled by any other one institution or organization. And then it's our intent for that board to hire a manager for this facility or a sports director that, yes, managing the tournaments and the facility itself, but also being the salesperson on the road generating tournament activity. Our largest premise is weekend tournament activity, so we've got to have someone devoted to that process. We have worked on a long-term stabilized operating budget and that's got revenue from all sorts of avenues, including tournaments and admission fees, concessions, rental of the space. And then also from an expense side, you've got tournament staff, you've got the management of the facility, you've got the utility costs. And so we've spent a lot of time refining those numbers, taking a look at other similar facilities and what those operating costs are. And so when we project out, once the facility is stabilized and we're having, I think, 25 tournament days a year for a majority of the events, or the stabilized operating budget, it is going to need a subsidy. It's going to need some sort of an additional revenue source to make sure that the bills are being paid. And our largest concern in bringing this to you was, and one of the reasons it's taken so long to get to this point is because we didn't want to simply come to you and say, "Here's a $10 million or $12 million building. City Council, please go find a way to fund that," and then also find a way to cover all the operating deficits into perpetuity. I didn't think that would go very well and our group really felt that we needed to make this as sustainable as possible. So we have worked with the area hotels in this community. And one thing that's being proposed as a way to cover that operating deficit on a long-term stabilized basis is the addition of a destination fee on hotel room bills that operates similar to hotel motel tax, except it's voluntary. The hotels opt into a contractual arrangement and the guests have an increased charge on their hotel stay. We're proposing on a percentage basis and that revenue would then be collected to support this facility on a long-term basis. And so we visit with the hotels. It's likely because it's a voluntary program that some hotels will participate and some won't. We hope they all participate, but we're building this model based upon the support that we believe we have out there. And we believe, based upon the support that we have, that that will generate enough revenue to cover the operating deficits from an annual cost, from a revenue minus expense standpoint. And so, again, that agreement would be, it would be a contract between the hotel and in this case, we're proposing the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the collection of that revenue. And that also allows the CVB to give some guidance and oversight to this facility to ensure that it is in fact generating weekend traffic. The hotels are on board in part because we're anticipating about 9,000 hotel room nights a year directly related to the operation of this facility. So I have really two requests before you tonight. One is, we are now in fundraising stage and so the request before you would be to, for you to authorize up to $50,000 for our fundraising efforts in the short term on this facility. So we have not hired an outside fundraising group. That would be a six-figure-plus proposition, but we have contracted with Joe O'Brien to assist us with that fundraising effort. We will also be printing some documents and things of that nature. So what I'd ask is of the Wine Guard set-aside money that was given to the city for this project, that we tap about 50,000 up, up to 50,000 for fundraising expenses associated with that. Also, I know you don't have a ton of information, but at some point in time, we would like to get your support for this facility, just even on a verbal basis, that the concept is good and sound and that you support the concept moving forward. And then some of the long-term requests, just to put on your radar. And I don't have anything specific for you today, but just to give you some idea of what we're thinking. So I mentioned the operating support. We believe that with the destination fee, we'll be able to cover expenses on an annual basis. What we're not completely comfortable with is the capital improvements that will be necessary to the facility and funding depreciation and major repairs in the future. Just like any facility, when it's brand-new, those costs should be fairly minimal, but over time, we want to make sure that we don't let this facility fall apart and we keep reinvesting in it. So one of the things we're probably going to seek from you is of the growth in hotel motel tax, we're probably going to seek a portion of that growth to help build a good capital base for this facility going forward. So what I believe we would envision is a request of a portion of that revenue go into an account that can be utilized in the event of a major repair. If the turf goes bad, we want to make sure that we can replace that and things of that nature. We need this facility looking nice for the long term. Also, we probably will ask you to be a contributor to the capital needs in building the facility. Our goal has been limited taxpayer exposure on this, so we're attempting to fund this with as much private money as possible. But I would envision us coming to you and seeking either a multi-year pledge or a one-time contribution to the construction of this facility. So again, I don't know exactly what that number will be at this point in time, but I at least wanted to give you some heads up in terms of what we're thinking. So as you encounter questions about this facility, you have some idea what the game plan is today. And again, everything I've showed you is tentative. It could all change, but this is kind of where we're at, at this stage of the game.
That Wine Guard money, how much has been used?
Stephanie, is that about 50,000 that we've used out of that? Just shy of that.
Okay. And it was originally?
It's 400,000 originally.
400,000 originally? Yeah. Okay. You have any questions for Jason?
I have a question.
Sure.
You say that you, by and large, expect the hotel fee to cover any potential operating costs. What happens if it doesn't? Who backstops that?
I would not envision us proceeding on the construction of the facility until we had that figured out.
So you don't know yet? Okay.
Good question.
Well, I mean, it's just another one, if it's something that's being envisioned to come back here, I think that that's something you need to have an understanding.
Where are you on the fundraising? Can you announce any numbers or?
I would say so far, fundraising efforts are going pretty good. No, unfortunately, we're not ready to announce that yet. Some of the, so right now, we're in major gift phase. So we have been asking for substantial contributions to the facility and that's going, that's going very well. We're seeing a lot of support to that. And so some of those can be made public soon, some of those will trickle out over time, but we're very much encouraged.
Good. Joe's doing good work.
I like.
He's doing all right.
I like the concept.
Oh, I think he's great.
And I like where you're putting it. I think that's good, too. The turf is also going to be available for softball, indoor-type things or?
So the only unfortunate thing that has come out of this is that we will not be able to build this to meet all of the needs of the community. We fully anticipate full utilization all the time in this facility. And so who's going to get to do what? We are not making any promises. What we can say is that the manager's job is going to be to help balance the needs of the community with being able to fund the operating expenses.
Are you going to hire Solomon to do that?
Don't know. Don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Coach.
What we can do is, for his first request, we can bring back a resolution on this next agenda authorizing up to the 50,000, if that's acceptable to the council.
The money's there.
Yes.
It's supposed to be used for that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, guys, for coming down. Jason, eye candy? All right. Okay. Next, we will start from the top. We'll just roll right downhill.
One that I think maybe you want to do to give a context for a couple of the items on the agenda, Nick, have Nick give his presentation regards to the washouts? Do you have, do you have one?
It's kind of bigger.
Yeah, because that'll get sort of a backdrop to your item with Klinger later.
Number four of the last slide.
So back in September 9, I believe, we had about a four-and-a-half-inch rain in an amount of an hour. Caused several issues in town, one of which is at North Four, or Fourth and North Street. There's a, it overwhelmed the storm sewer and went over top. These are some of the pictures of it. Shows you the washout currently. It's barricaded. There's a railing there and the sidewalk is being detoured essentially out around it just because it's unsafe. It's a fairly significant washout. I'll be talking later about a potential retaining wall being going in there, which I believe is here. I'll shift to Patterson Street. Patterson Street is one block north of Agency, right around the curve. I can show you a map right here. So it is, it's a, I would say it's an alleyway more than anything that it goes up, but you can see here, it washed out the south half of the road where it's right up against the existing pavement. Also, we had a little bit of washout of which it seems to be easily repaired over off of Sixth and Sycamore where it overwhelmed the storm sewer again, but then there also, it knocked loose some of the piping and caused some erosion there. So I will be talking about the Fourth and North Street here. I have a resolution from Klinger for some design work, so.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Well, which brings us to number three. We do have, well, let me read number one. We have a proclamation of retirement for Robbie Kirby Cork, which I never knew that his name was Robert. But anyways, that's going to be a good job for him. Number three, we will have a mayor's award next week as well. Number three is a public hearing, consideration of voluntary annexation of territory.
Good evening.
I'm going to show a map here first, just to know where we're at here.
My name's Ryan DeGrawke. I'm with Midwest Realty Group. And tonight, I'm here basically to discuss the proposed annexation of that property there highlighted in yellow for a proposed subdivision on the south edge of town. And I think, do you have that clicker, Eric?
And this went through the Planning Commission and Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the annexation. This is not within two miles of the city of West Burlington, so it's a voluntary annexation and not in an urbanized area, which makes a little easier process through the state. But it is in Des Moines County. It was considered for annexation about 15 years ago, did not complete that process at the time. But Ryan's here to talk about a new proposal and request for annexation and development of the area.
Thanks, Eric. So I'll give you a quick background about myself and my company, Midwest Realty Group. We were formed a couple of years ago. We mainly focus in the residential investment side, the world of real estate. We do different consulting services. We do cash flow risk analysis on different real estate properties and some property management as well. So what I'm proposing is a new subdivision called Deer Point Estates. It's located, as I mentioned, on the south side of town. The road that's, does it have a laser pointer on it?
Yep.
Right over here, that's Summer Street. To the north, that's Kessler Street. And on the northwest corner here is the Water Tower that everybody kind of knows on the south side of town there. So again, my request today is, you know, for you guys at the council meeting to approve the annexation of this subject property. It will consist of 34 single-family home lots. These home, or the lots will be conforming to R1 single-family. They will, design-wise, they will match pretty much all these that are on Kessler Street, Sioux Street, the ones to the north. Size-wise, they'll be about 80-foot wide, 123-foot deep. We envision the price point of these homes, once built out, in between that $180,000 to $275,000 price point. There's going to be several benefits for everybody on Deer Point Estates. We are going to place covenants, some restrictions in place for the homeowners just to ensure that there is a quality subdivision that's built for that neighborhood. I will look to be selling these lots as well to local builders that will use a local labor workforce here in town and also purchase the materials and such from our local lumberyards. So sales tax revenue that would be generated from that as well. This also, I'll talk about this a little more in detail here in a minute, but with this proposed subdivision, it'll potentially open up an additional 45 to 50 acres for possible annexation into the city and for residential development for the future growth of Burlington. So our goal would be to break ground early spring this year. As Eric mentioned earlier, at the Planning Commission meeting there in December, they did recommend approval of the annexation of this property. Something I kind of take pride on is that upfront, honest person, and we kind of took a proactive approach, a little bit different than I think some have done maybe in the past. We did send out a introduction letter to all the neighbors that will be neighboring the subdivision, so all those people that were along Kessler Street. With that letter, I sent a map that you saw earlier of that subdivision, and then I sent a comment form to all of them. I did get two comment forms back from some of those neighbors. Main concerns from the neighbors were the view out their backyard and water drainage issues, things like that that come with development. Our company, we have engaged, spelling error, I'm sorry, Steve, Klinger and Associates here for the engineering and development of the subdivision, just to make sure that, you know, those concerns are addressed. Because I understand there's questions and when there's development, you know, there's those questions and concerns, I want to make sure they're addressed properly. Last spring, I believe it was in April, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning conducted a housing study. Gruen and Gruen Associates was the firm that was retained for that. These were just some of the findings that they had. The next couple of slides, I'll discuss those. Basically, they say that if more residential development in Des Moines County is not facilitated, then there's a downward filtration, meaning on price, meaning the quality of the housing here in the greater Burlington area. They also noted that currently, there's limited land that is available within the current city limits of Burlington for housing development. One I found kind of interesting, being born and raised here, you know, that a third of our housing stock here in Burlington is 75 years or older with a value of only about They completed an analysis based on what Gruen and Gruen saw as future housing demand for Burlington. This chart here kind of gives it for Burlington and West Burlington area. They found that 77% They found that 77% of the demanded units would be priced at 260,000 or under, basically showing that there's a tight supply in the price range of 180 to 260, with only about an excess of four units of supply on hand. So that chart kinda here breaks that down, showing that a total, but to 2025, housing units in Burlington, greater Burlington area of 841. The price point that I'm trying to target is at 180 to about 275, so it kinda would fall more in this category here with about 161 units demanded with showing, you know, the shortest supply. So I think we all know what happens when there's no supply, you know? The demand goes up, the price goes up with it, so. Just kind of a basic economic overview a little bit here for new housing cost for a builder. This chart shows kind of the breakout on a per square foot basis on, on the developer's cost that's in it. So this, this example here is based on a 1,500 square foot home that were to be built. The land and site improvements of the lot that a 1,500 square foot home would be built on would be about $20 per square foot, so on that house would be about $30,000 for that lot. Hard costs, soft costs, financing, those types of things would be about $140. Overhead profit for that builder, about $18 a foot when they break that out. So what they're saying is the cost, you know, is about $178 a square foot to build that 1,500 square foot home. So based on the, you know, this, that to get the housing in the price point that's really needed for the area, the economics just don't work for it for that to be priced below that 270 price point. Currently, there are several lots for sale here in town that would be comparable to the Deer Point Estates that I'm proposing. The price point of those lots are anywhere from 35 to about 55,000. So with any type of project or development, there's always challenges I think everybody faces. Typically, when you're doing development, what, what they say is that the, the price of the lot should not exceed 10 to 15% of the cost of that home once it's sold. So, you know, currently, if you go back, we look, there was lots I mentioned over here, 35,000, 55,000, and then this was in the spring, numbers that were pulled out of that, but, so you'd be looking at, you know, homes in that 300,000 plus price range. Well, I've been working with Klinger and whatnot since July probably, and I've gotten a lot of my bids back from the contractors for the roads, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, utilities, the design work, you know, things like that. So right now, in the first phase of my project, my per lot cost is about 33,000. So right now, that cost of infrastructure, you know, just doesn't allow those lots to be sold at the price point that encourages the development where the supply is the, the smallest. The city completed a comprehensive plan back, oh, probably about three, four years ago, I believe. So the left column here kinda talks about what was in that comprehensive plan that the city you guys had worked on back then. They stated to evaluate incentives to remain, you know, effective in promoting housing in the Burlington area, to make sure that we're competitive with surrounding communities, you know, West Burlington, Middletown, Minneapolis, to make sure that we're competitive. Consider ordinances and programs to encourage the development of workforce housing and market rate housing. The right column is based, I believe it was last summer in June, you guys held a work session or a goal planning session, I think it was called, and you guys had publicly then supported that housing study that Gruen had done last spring. You noted, I remember reading the note, Jim, you had put in something that, you know, property valuation is growing at a very slow rate and that that was a concern because, you know, the property tax revenue is a huge source of income for our, our city and that if we're growing at a slow rate, it's kinda hard to, to be able to fund projects, you know, that, that we would like to do as well. It noted infrastructure costs and new development, you know, increases that sales price of a home and that's a big hurdle to, to overcome. And it mentioned that if possible, to provide incentives for any roadway or utility extensions to, to open up for future development. So in order for Midwest Realty here to encourage new homes in that price point that is most demanded for a future, I'm here kinda, I know it's more for annexation, but I'm giving you the, the whole project as a whole thing, so you know everything that's gonna be coming at you guys in the next month, two months to, to come. We will be requesting that the city of Burlington enter into a development agreement to offer tax increment financing incentives. There's gonna be several, several things on that. Do you have that map, Eric? If you could put that up, the... Then move that to the east. There you go, thanks buddy. So one of the things that I've kinda visited with is, is currently, all the sewer connections are over here on Summer Street. And so what I've visited with and, and is getting cost estimates and doing a cost sharing, you know, with you guys to put in a new sewer line down South 14th Street. There's a lift station down there. By doing that, that helps open up actually, on the east side of 14th is 30 additional acres of land that could be future developed and that would have then access to future infrastructure needs. Let me go back to the slide now if you... Okay, so obviously, as a developer agreement, you know, it's pretty common that the cost or the payments don't exceed the actual cost of the, the development. This request obviously has a huge impact to making this project feasible, to make the, the, the housing where it's, it's most needed, and it'd encourage us to develop that land as fast as possible to get him, to get the increment coming back to the developer. So kinda what, you know, things that you would require from us and what we would look for from the city, pretty basic stuff here, you know? Make sure we have all 34 lots that are billed to market within that subdivision. We would upfront all those costs for infrastructure and improvements. No tax abatement would be filed by any of the homeowners. You guys to do the, the TIF payments on a semi-annual basis and then allow those rights to be assigned, enter that agreement, and then set aside, so with any TIF project, low to moderate income, there's an amount that has to be set aside for Des Moines County, I believe that's like 38, 38.4% that has to be set aside. Community support, we have reached out to a lot of different members of the community, whether they're, they're individuals or the business community. We have received a letter of support from the Greater Burlington Partnership, talked to a lot of the realtors in town, and they supported a lot of housing in this price point. It's where they see the most demand in town. When people are moving, they look for, for homes in that price point and there's just not a lot out there. A local recruiter I visited with out at GRMC at the, at the hospital here supports the project as, you know, he helps recruit a lot of new doctors of this area and to get a young doctor, you know, younger like myself, you know, they have a lot of student debt and they don't wanna start out at a half million dollar house always, so he, he felt this project would be pretty, pretty attractive to, to his, helping his needs. And then as well, I visited with a lot of local builders and they showed a lot of interest because right now, there's not a, a supply of lots out there for builders to come in to purchase and to build custom homes. So kinda lastly, you know, what does the, the city of Burlington get from this project? You do get, you know, future street extended down to my development and then a new sewer line that's gonna be put in there for future use as well to extend the city of Burlington for residential development. I do have a, a right-of-way agreement with Mr. Greg Kessler, who owns the 30 acres to the east, that will be assigned then to the city, so the city would have access all the way down for that future right-of-way. Increased property assessments and therefore tax revenues, increased utility fees, permit fees, creates housing obviously where there's a, a demand shown. And then I think we've had a, I think we all can agree that we've had a lot of momentum here in the last couple of years with the economic development in town and everything, and this really helps with that. And then it also just helps with employer attraction and retention, so. Then lastly, just wanna thank you guys for your time. I understand, again, this was about the annexation of the property, not about all the other content, but I felt that it was necessary to give you the whole story today just to kinda know what's gonna be coming your way with, with this development project, so. Guys have any questions for me, we'd be happy to answer those.
Are you gonna require basements?
Probably be a good mix, good mix of homes, yep. Some will have basements, some will be slab.
Some will be slab, okay.
Yep.
Well, it sounds like a very attractive program.
Thank you.
I'm curious if our police or fire chief, you have any input? One way or the other? Yes, no, maybe nothing?
Yeah, I know, um, we, yeah, we did meet, can you put that map back up if you don't mind? We did meet, so I think I'd mentioned I'm an open, honest guy and I've had a lot of the city officials, you know, from day one to, to get their feelings. I think your guys' main concern, I was gonna phase the project, so coming down South 14th into here and kinda dead in and for phase one, that'd be 21 lots. I think your guys' main concern was that having two access points, you know, so making sure that I can get this road back out to here, to Summer Street, so then there's, you know, two access points in and out. I think that was the main, main concern from you guys, and then if not, I would have to just do a, what are you, a bull nose or a hammerhead type, a hammerhead down here and then post a performance bond to the city to guarantee that that would get finished all the way out, if that answers your question.
It does.
Well, a couple of components with this. A couple of, for, for long-term, this does help for, for us as Ryan came forward with this proposal, looking to do this. His, his initial design called for the sewer to go out to Summer Street. We looked at the idea of there being value to us to pay the difference between him doing that and running a sewer line from there down to the lift station along South Fort...
Yeah, here's the lift station then.
Along the, where South 14th Street would be, be continued south there. That would mean that that sewer would be in place for future, if there was future development along that, in that area, it could tie into it and make it a little bit more cost-effective for future development for the rest of the area. His ability to work out the potential deal for getting the easement for, right-of-way for that extension of, of South 14th Street along with this process is, is a big deal for helping that to open up in the future. Another thing that we recognized is he brought forward what he was looking to do. The requirement for two access points there and the need to put in two roads that were not part of the subdivision to get to the subdivision from two different alternative sides, that's a significant cost. We recognize that and we also recognize the value of hitting a price point that is hard from a developer's perspective to get hit, that 180, specifically out of the housing report, the 180 to 240,000 area. There is value to all of those to, to make the idea of using a TIF rebate acceptable for being brought forward to the council. You've done a, you did a TIF in the past for the, the housing just north of there. This is not the same type of structure, but the TIF, the TIF rebate means that all of the risk on the collection of taxes is on the developer. If he doesn't build it out as quickly as he hopes, his, his goal, I think the performa that you're doing was three years...
Yeah, the first phase of the 21 lots, uh, be in and out in three years.
If he misses that target, he's the one who takes all the risk. If he gets it done quicker than that, he gets a little bit more benefit too, but 21 units is a lot to get done even in three years. The, there is a requirement, if you do TIF for housing, you do have to, there's, there's two different pieces. One, there's 11, it has to be for 11 years or no more than 11 years, so it's a different timeframe than what's allowed in a typical TIF. You also have to have that low to moderate income set aside, and we have different options for what we can talk about using that. We haven't had any discussions yet in regards to what we would look at doing. I think in the past, Eric, what have you done with something similar?
We've had some excess funds through CDBG or other things. We've done a housing or a roofing project. We've done some home improvements, low to moderate income, just home improvement projects. Could be used as a grant match for applications for owner occupied rehabs or different things like that, so. There's a variety of things, but just targeting, whether it's citywide or particular areas within the city, we can use those funds at our discretion for that low to moderate income.
But this would envision, the proposal that he's bringing before you would envision, if he's able to do it successfully, using the full value of that TIF rebate over 11 years on, I think essentially both phases. The goal there is to do one phase, the 21 units, and then to roll into a second phase for the other 12?
13.
13.
On a, on a second phase with a similar arrangement.
Do we have to declare this a TIF area or is it already done?
It's not a TIF area, and the, the timing on this, I mean, you're not in a position to worry about that. You have, you have to go through the process of holding your public hearing on the possible, on the proposed annexation. If you do approve that annexation, annexation proposal, it goes on to the state after the state certifies receipt of that?
Yeah, now, the Secretary of State acknowledges receipt, that they've received everything from the city, then it's deemed annexed, so that could take a week or two weeks.
At that, at that point, we can begin a process of, if, if that, if we get to that point, that would be where you would look at a potential for then have beginning discussions on a TIF rebate, but that request is part of what ultimately he will be bringing forward as, to make this be a successful project on his part, something that he actually completes. So you gotta know that on the front side, that, that, that will be a request on the backside before he does ultimately move forward with it.
Yep.
Obviously, we're gonna have more information coming in too, and tonight, we're just dealing with the annexation, so. But do appreciate the extra information. Are you born in Burlington?
Yep, born and raised here in town, yep, yep. Is your boy Tracy?
What's, no, Tracy's my nephew, actually.
Nephew, okay, he was a year younger than me in school, so.
Is that right?
One of my former students.
Everybody was one of your former students.
Good or bad, I don't know.
It's good to see some, some local people doing some things locally, so that's, that's always good. Hopefully, we can get something worked out. You guys have any other questions or comments for Ryan?
I'm just happy to see it, hope it, hope it goes. I mean, there's a need, there's, obviously.
Appreciate it.
Amen.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming down.
Have a good evening.
Hey, nice job, Ryan.
Okay, now move to the proposed consent agenda next. We have, anybody have any problems with the nuisance payments?
I see a lot of repeat offenders.
Yeah, yeah, well, getting used to that. Crazy stuff. All right, number two, resolution approving refund of liquor license for Orrin Smith doing business at Whitehorse Lounge.
That means he's going out of the business, right?
All right, we got some amens. Number three, just stop, may I, if I need to stop. Number three, resolution approving agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. for design of phase one of the Masl sewer separation project. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. The resolution for you will approve the purchase, or the professional services agreement with H.R. Green for the sewer separation beginning for Masl or the Market Angular South Locust District. I wanna be grabbing this here. Sewer separation is one of our big projects going on over the next 10 years. This is a map of the Masl basin of which, the pink, the Locust Basin is the one that this contract is specifically starting with. So back in November, we did an RFQ process where several staff members saw a statement of qualifications and interviewed firms for their, for, for their qualifications in the past on other projects. And after selecting H.R. Green, we began contract negotiations. As far as the contract specifics, I'm gonna ask my engineering manager to come up here and talk about that a little bit more.
Sorry, I kinda threw you in there. Again, I'm, I'm Bob Wright, the engineering manager. So as we evaluated H.R. Green and, and came back with a schedule, they provided a schedule in which they'll do initial project planning in order to do the preparation for the CDBG application. So they're taking that on... So they're taking that on, um, doing the full application. A lot of that has some preliminary design work in there. Um, so the way they've structured their, 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 um, fees and, and funding, looking at getting the bulk of that planning and CDBG app application done by, uh, the June timeframe, so this fiscal year. And then all the remaining work for planning and, uh, design come into the fiscal eighteen. So, so with that, uh, they'll do a complete surveying analysis for that Locust Basin. They'll go back and, and do all of the, uh, sewer, uh, assessment. They're looking at replacing the sanitary sewer and then using the existing combined sewer as the storm. So they'll do separation as they go right down through that, uh, Locust Basin. We'll also put together a, a more comprehensive plan as far as the, uh, um, flow monitoring, not just in Locust, but also throughout the Cascade Basin that we've already finished up as well as the Hawkeye Basin that we had finished up so that we can look at, uh, overflow rates there as well as Market, Angular and, uh, South. So that gets us pretty much through, uh, fiscal eighteen. Should get us complete design plans and actually the start of the, uh, Locust separation.
The, the contract that you have here includes the construction phase services at fifty-seven thousand. Is that a reduced amount from?
That is a much reduced amount. The original amount was, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. We're taking on the, the responsibility of, of, uh, let, uh, cause you call it letting that project and doing the project management. Uh, we use one of our, uh, investigators, uh, inspectors and, uh, do all that complete hands-on. So that eliminates H.R. Green from having to have a full-time person here in Burlington managing the day-to-day operations.
Now, one of the things, so this project, one, we're hoping to be able to get the CDB, do a CDBG app, which they have included as a part of their scope of services for, for writing that app. Uh, their construction phase services, are they doing, uh, the follow-up requirements for, um, CDBG and S, SRF, uh, oversight for making sure that your jobs match, all the Davis Bacon, et cetera?
Correct. So they'll take responsibility for that. And then we, we, you know, in our discussion with that, really, uh, with, uh, myself and our new, uh, city engineer, Jesse Howell, being new to this type of CDBG funding, we're gonna basically on-the-job training. So they'll basically train us on how to do that then. So when we go forth with, uh, with Angular and, uh, Market, uh, we can take on more of that responsibility in-house.
Now, Nick, did Nick, uh, not Nick, uh, Charlie? Did Charlie, uh, do the process for getting us, doing the LMI surveys to make, to get us to where we're officially qualified for CDVG funding?
I'd have to check with Charlie. We've done that in the past with regional planning. We've done, uh, applications in the past with them, so I, I believe we, we've done that, but I'll-
That, well, that's good through the, he did. I, I just don't know if he did it himself or if it was done with, uh, regional planning or not. Um, that's good through the end of this year, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to get, uh, whatever engineering firm we were on, gonna bring onboard, uh, in place and that assured that they felt that they could get a project reasonably out the door that was well-done, uh, so that we could apply for that funding based off of it. The CDVG funding that we're eligible for is, uh, eight-hundred thousand?
I wanted to say five-hundred thousand.
Five-hundred.
You know, it's, we got some conflicting-
Numbers on that.
Responses from, from several.
So we can use, we can go after that funding on this one. Uh, just later rounds will require that we go back and recertify the areas that, to certify that they're eligible 'cause I think those are only good for maybe two years from the time of year survey. Uh, and we would envision, if, if we're able to, if we truly do meet the LMI threshold requirements, we would anticipate for each of the successive basins doing additional CDVG applications for each one. We don't have a preliminary cost estimate on this whole, on this first basin though, do we?
You know, only from a standpoint of linear feet, um, and I wanted to say we were at-
About four and a half million.
Right, yes.
Four and a half million?
Four and a half-five.
Four and a half-five million on this project.
So as you think through that, if you got a five-million-dollar project and you got close to a, a, a million-dollar design work on the front end, now some of that is design work that's envisioned to help you with, uh, future components as well.
Correct.
So you got a little bit more front-loaded design work. On a six-million-dollar overall cost, you potentially have five-hundred thousand of CDVG funding and the rest of it will be through SRF financing on a twenty-year basis. Uh, and we'll have succeeding projects to do too. We will very quickly on that, as we move forward, you get a couple of those through the system and will quickly eat up our ability to, to affordably refine, to pay for, uh, over the next few years. So, but we had, gotta get down the road and start doing those processes before we can even go to the state and have a discussion about any extension of time.
And this is the small section? At seven minutes.
To give you perspective, the overall project is estimated to cost between thirty-six and forty million. Now with going, the approach of replacing sanitary sewers is a little more costly, but it's an upfront cost. You know, these sewers now will last us probably about a hundred years versus some of the Cascade and Hawkeye sanitary sewer have already, are already older. And so now we, you know, you see a lot of I and I issues with those types of, um, you know, storm sewer installations rather than sanitary.
So these numbers are correct here in the memo, almost a million dollars over two fiscal years.
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I was confused about that.
Yeah.
And to give you perspective on the overall scheme of the MSL separation, um, that, that's the biggest thing is, is the, our deadline is twenty-twenty-five to be separated and then an additional three years to do EQ basins. And so there's a lot of work to be done in the matter of, well, less, less than ten years now, it's two thousand seventeen, eight years. You know, you're gonna have to start design phase on one in the middle of construction on it and then start design and planning on the next basin. And so that's what you see here is, as soon as we're in the middle of construction with, uh, with, uh, Locusts, you, you'll see them start on South's design.
So you don't see, uh, you don't foresee any extension on this, on this timeline?
Uh, I am hopeful and optimistic that we will get an extension, but they made it clear to us that asking for one, we would have to demonstrate where our costs are. Cause we, when we went and asked a couple of years ago, we just weren't far enough along in this process to be able to show what the different phases were actually gonna cost and we're still not there. But as we move forward over the next, well, I, I hope that over this year, we'll be able to get some tentative cost estimates that we put with the, the future basins as well. They won't be completely flushed out, but at least enough that we can start having some discussions about, are we gonna be able to extend this timeline some?
And what happens if we don't meet deadlines?
Well, assumably penalties would follow, but.
I just can't see that happening.
I know, if you don't have the money to separate, then you don't really have the money to pay the penalties.
Everybody's having problems coming with that money.
It's, it's, it's a, it was a nationwide mandate that there was essentially no funding for.
As long as we're showing, they, what they communicated with us last time was, as long as we showed that we were making progressive steps to move forward and that we weren't shirking any responsibility, they would be willing to work with us. The problem with that kind of a statement is that was two years ago and by the time we're in a position a couple of years down the road, is that the same, is it the same philosophy being shown or not?
Possibly that'll change with, the change is coming in our government.
You, you, you never know.
That's true.
So you just wait and see how things go.
And, and the one good thing is, is we're also simultaneously with the EPA, who is ultimately responsible, doing the long-term stormwater planning. So if they can see what we're doing in the separation process and see our fee scheduling and see that it isn't obtainable in that timeframe, my hope is, I don't know if anybody else expressed it, but I'm hoping that we can get an extension. But I, I can't, can't count our wishes, but hopefully. But until then, we have to act as though it's not.
Right on.
In regards to funding on this, uh, we did a, a planning and design loan uh, for a million dollars back in two thousand thirteen. We've used six-hundred-some-thousand of that? Five-hundred-and-thirty thousand of that, so we have four-hundred-and-fifty thousand or so left on that. Uh, talking with the state, they'll allow us to come, put, use the remaining balance on that as part of this P and, or part of this project and then we'll open a second P and D loan for an additional amount.
And then roll both of them.
And then roll both of those into the, the project when we do the project. Uh, those loans are zero percent loans, uh, so we're not paying any interest until we enter a, I think it's when you enter the construction contract, from that date, you start entering, enter, or having interest start to occur.
I don't know what their interest rates are of late, but I saw them at like-
Two percent, I think, is the interest rate on it. So it's, it's not bad interest, uh, but, uh, it's still there. Um, but we'll probably end up having to do that. We'll see interest payments potentially in FY eighteen that we don't have in our budget. But, uh, we don't know what to really, uh, anticipate for what those amounts will be at any point.
You guys good?
And that'll all be covered out as sewer revenue.
Are we good?
Some people think all interest is bad.
All interest is bad. All right, thank you, sir. Number four, resolution approving agreement with Klinger and Associates PC for design of retaining wall in Street Repair at Fourth and North Streets. Stay where you're at, you're there.
Yeah. As I alluded to before about the landslide issues, I have a resolution before you approving the professional services agreement with Klinger to, um, help us with the design on the retaining wall at Fourth and North. Um, so I showed you these pictures already, um, and Brian is here with Klinger and he, um, did all, they, they did some soil borings back in November to take analysis of what we can do and how far down a retaining wall would have to go. Um, but I would, I'd like to bring him up here if he's available so that way he can maybe talk about some of the specifics that I don't quite understand.
All right, Brian Bros with Klinger Associates. Um, appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss it with you. As you can see on this, uh, map here, we did, we did do two soil borings, uh, in the city right-of-way. Um, bedrock was found, uh, between sixteen and eighteen feet in those locations. Um, we anticipate that a potential retaining wall, potentially the way we've got it outlined in blue, maybe it could be shorter, we haven't got into all of that detail. Uh, but we would expect it would be very similar there. Uh, experiences that we've had elsewhere in the community. Uh, we find the bedrock down at, at depth to be fairly competent and you could set a good, a good, uh, permanent concrete reinforced retaining wall there. The, um, the right-of-way, of course, goes, uh, right behind that retaining wall, everywhere in that retaining wall. And then the, the section in red that you see is also Burlington property. Uh, the property to the north, I, it's private property there, so. Um, so basically, um, our fees are for a design only, preparation of plans with notes on the plans, uh, for the city to obtain bids and do any construction observation that they choose to do. If, if they would want to engage further services, we can assist as necessary, so.
Let's talk a little bit about the cost of the overall project. Um, from, from what Brian has provided to me, he said that we should probably plan on budgeting about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this project. Um, it's, it's a fairly significant, um-
Seven-hundred-and-fifty grand?
And maybe he could explain that better than I-
Come on back, Brian.
Is that just for this, this one location or is that, so what about the other one?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty grand? Seven-hundred-and-fifty grand?
First of all, I'm not a contractor, okay? So, uh, when we, when we actually have a design, we can get pricing and we can narrow that down. But what's involved in the design is going to be, uh, we, we have, uh, what formerly was a combined sewer that went through there. We have to work around a sewer and a storm sewer in that location. We have to excavate to bedrock to get a good footing for the retaining wall, which is gonna necessitate, uh, re, recon, re-contouring and repaving that street. So basically, that, that wedge there, that pie-shaped wedge from where it says North Street and there's a power pole, probably in that whole area will be a hole that will be involved with construction and, and, and we'll have to get in there so that we're suitably able to get access. We're working on a fairly steep bluff and so there's, there's a lot of logistics in and out. And I just think when a contractor looks at that, he's gonna say, hey, that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty difficult job. Um, seven-hundred-and-fifty, I believe is a high number, frankly. Um, but we've got a lot of excavation to do. We've gotta get in there and place the concrete, the reinforcing. We've got eighteen to twenty feet of height of a wall, uh, in that location, so.
Eighteen to twenty feet?
Yeah. Cause we need to set that wall on bedrock.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm designing for a permanent solution here. So because you have utilities crossing through there, uh, this is a very nice overlook as well. Um, we wanna make sure it's done and done, you don't have to deal with it again. And, uh, so I'm, I'm hoping I'm high. But I, I, I feel like giving you, giving you the idea that you need a budget and if we come in under budget, that's great, but we're gonna, we're only gonna know when we get bids.
This is not part of the CIP. Uh, we actually, I've been looking at, I'd tentatively set aside five-hundred thousand dollars, so I was underestimating the cost.
Maybe it's good.
But, uh, we'd tentatively look to cover this out as sewer. You do have the sewer inlet that's right back behind that-
Right.
-location and it is a good justification to do that. It may make sense that that's, that's a division between that and streets, road use tax. I'm not really sure, uh, this is, I don't know what's the pro, the proper spot for that. Um, both accounts have funds that, that on hand that we can address this. Uh, the sewer fund has six-point-two million coming into this year, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, so we, we're in a position that we can handle it all out of there. It's not what we wanna do, but we have funds on hand to, to, to be able to address this. The road use tax has one-point-seven, I think, coming into this year in that neighborhood. So if we go to look at some of it coming out of there, we can, we can also accom, accommodate that. Road use tax has a couple of other pieces that are going to be hitting on it. Uh, the one, as Nick highlighted at the beginning of this, of the meeting or the discussion about the washouts that occurred last fall, that roadway is a potential to be just close to two-hundred thousand? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And so I, I assume it's appropriate to talk about it now. Patterson Street is one of those others. We're gonna do some further investigation. Uh, this is the one I told you that the road had washed out from up above down to Agency Street. And so I had Jesse, our city engineer, put together kind of a preliminary idea on how to, to fix this problem and it was with a retaining wall. Um, and his estimate is at a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. Currently, we, we had, we had a discussion about potentially, there's a, a property immediately below that road. Talked about acquiring that property and potentially demoing it and then being able to get away with no retaining wall and just do it through grading, which would be a significant less cost. So it's dependent upon whether or not we can acquire this building and demo it for, you know-
A realistic figure.
A realistic figure.
Right on.
And, and a timeframe to get this road functional, cause currently it is closed just because of the, the, the da, the, the damage that it did sustain on the south side. So a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand is Jesse's estimate on this. If we were to go to the retaining wall, wow, huh, it's a mouthful, retaining w- wall route. But I don't know what the cost would be to acquire the property, demo it and then do the, the grading, but it should be fairly significantly less. So I, hopefully, I'll be able to find that out here in the next month or so, if, if we're even able to do it. Otherwise, I will have to probably bring that proposal forward, so.
And I think that the way I had that set up in the budget, Stephanie, did I have that as a road use tax, transfer from road use tax to miscellaneous street projects at an increased amount for the ne, this next year? For like three-hundred thousand or something like that to make sure that we could address that as well as have funds set aside for doing the Jefferson Street improvements, uh, adjacent, on the three-hundred block? I think that was sixty thousand?
Two-hundred. Sixty?
Two-hundred. Two hundred block, uh, for about sixty thousand, and, and potentially seeing some improvements out near Notre Dame to that frontage road. Having at least enough funds that we could accommodate that project if it were to happen. Uh, that's one that we've had some requests to look at doing some widening on that frontage road. Whether, whether we ultimately do bring something forward to you or not, we're not to that point, but wanted to make sure that we could at least accommodate that, or a comparable project if something else were to come up. And that's the miscellaneous street account, that street, miscellaneous street rehab that we set aside is to try to handle some of those unforeseen things that come up. The sewer side, uh, we do a mis- what's labeled a miscellaneous sewer rehab account in the budget, and we'd been doing three hundred and fifty thousand annually into that. We hadn't set aside a fund for that this year, or, no, it wasn't that large.
It was a hundred, I thought.
It's a hundred and forty, um, like that amount. Um, we're looking to do a much higher amount this next year and in, on, in ongoing years just 'cause there are enough miscellaneous projects that come up during the course of the year. We have the sewer line down to the depot, or storm sewer line down that, there that we need to address. Uh, that, that's the identified fund to come from for that, and other projects like that do come up that we need to make sure that we can hit on. So, I know I'm going into extra details. Uh, road use tax does have another item that it has to hit, be able to cover potentially, potentially this year. We did the RISE project that was attached to job creation with Case, um, in two thousand thirteen or two thousand twelve. For the highway nine, highway ninety-nine, the bluff road improvements. Um, they did not hit their job creation numbers for the full-time, uh, of the, the grant period. So there's a potential that we may have an, and a part of those state funds that we received, a portion of those we may owe back. We've kind of tentatively set aside that that might be two hundred thousand. When we did that project, I think we received in, uh, five or six hundred thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five of which we would be responsible for.
Seven hundred and fifty.
And they, they, I think they completed about.
About fifty percent.
Fifty-five percent of the jobs that they needed to complete, so, um, assumably, you would have to be responsible for about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, so.
So, as you talk about cash balances in the, some of these different funds, there's a reason that, why you want to make sure that you have healthy balances to make sure that you can address those without compromising the ability to do something else, which is a note that is in my eight-page document in there.
Fun. Hey, uh, we've got number five approving an agreement with Stanley Consultants Inc. to perform structural analysis on the Central Avenue retaining walls. I tried to call you.
I figured I'd talk too much, anyway. Um, the agreement before you is for Stanley to do some review on the Central Street Bridge. We discussed that last time Stanley was here to discuss Mount Pleasant. Um, this is a, just an added-on type project for them to evaluate and then come up with some sort of a proposal or a preliminary plans on how they would fix some of the, the problems with the retaining wall, including, um, potentially some troughs off the side that would allow the water to shed better, so.
You guys good? Okay, resolution approving the application for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, Safer, two thousand and sixteen, Chief?
Alright, good evening. Yes, first, I just want to remind you, this is a, uh, approval to apply for the grant, I did it last year, if you remember. That's, I guess over the years, they've, a lot of people would apply for the grant without any kind of council support. They would get awarded a grant, come before the council, be like, no, we're not interested. And so they, that's a, a requirement of the grant to get some kind of approval upfront before you apply, it's a part of your, your package. So that's why I'm here for approval to apply. Uh, if we were awarded the grant, I would be back up here, and you'd have to give your okay to accept the grant. Um, I did sit in on a webinar the other day, they're expecting several thousand applicants, and they're expecting to give out about three hundred awards, so it's not like this is a slam dunk deal by any means, so a lot of competition. Uh, the grant period opened today, you can apply today, and then closes on February tenth, so they give you a real short, uh, window to get these done.
Do you find, do you find out on February tenth if you guys got it?
No.
That's, that's when you're.
That's when it's due, and, uh, they said they're hoping to give them out beginning of the summer, all the way through August, and beginning of August, they'll be done awarding the Safer grant, so. And it is a two thousand and sixteen grant, they're like a year behind, so they're, they're calling us the two thousand and sixteen AFG while it's came out, and we didn't even hear about it till a couple of weeks ago, so it, it's, uh, that's where they're at. Uh, the Safer grant, just to remind you, is a, a federal grant, um, that's used, if you're a career department, the only thing you can use the money for is to hire, uh, new firefighter positions. They won't fund, uh, part-time, they won't fund fire chiefs, fire marshals, deputy chiefs, has to be somebody whose job is to fight fires primarily. So also, they can be, uh, paramedics assigned to an ambulance, as long as part of their job is firefighting duties. Um, some of the new rules are different from when we applied or when we had the grant before, has, it's no longer a two-year, one-hundred percent funded program. Uh, the last Safer grant we had was for a two-year period, and they paid all the salary and benefits, uh, for the firefighters. Now it's a three-year program, and they expect the cities to participate in the cost of the employee, so I think that gets, people really have to be committed to this to, uh, take the Safer grants now. Uh, the first year, we would pay twenty-five percent of the cost, the second year, twenty-five percent, and the third year, we would pay sixty-five percent of the cost of the city. And if any point in there, we decide you didn't want to continue with the grant, then you were required to pay back FEMA for the cost that they had reimbursed you for. Um, this grant, the, the resolution before you is asking for six firefighters for three years, so two per shift. The total cost of that would be about one point six million or five, five hundred and fifty thousand per year if we were just to fund that out of our budget. Uh, the first and second year costs would be about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to the city, the third year costs three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We came up with a cost estimate based on the worst or best-case scenario, I guess. If we make a new hire, this person would be a paramedic already trained to firefighter one, and they come in with a family, so they're at the highest, uh, health insurance rate, so we took the most that we could expect to pay for a new employee, and that's where we came up with about ninety-one thousand dollars per firefighter, that'd be on the, on the very high end. And that's using next year's, uh, wage, starting wage, so. So I anticipated just a couple of questions, one was, and I already had this question, why for six and not for three, like we did last time? Well, two for, well, two, for two reasons, one is overtime savings, and the other reason is minimum staffing. If you just do one per shift, well, you kind of got to take your choice, do you want to save money on overtime? Or do you want to increase the daily staffing? You can't do both. If you just do one per shift and increase the daily staffing, your overtime's gonna be just the same as it is now. So with two, you can increase daily staffing by one, and then also have that other person filling that overtime slot on a daily basis. So you would, you would save both. The big thing they're looking at this year is meeting NFPA seventeen-ten, and I've brought that up, different things, budget time and annual reports, but basically, and, and also when we did our ISO rating, that's one area we fell short. So they're looking at having, they want you to, uh, respond to a fire with, uh, fifteen firefighters. Uh, right now, even on paper, on a good day, if we have a minimum staffing of ten, and we have a response on automatic aid from West Burlington, the most we're gonna show up there with is fourteen. Uh, with this, if we added one per shift, on paper, if we were to minimum eleven, we, at least theoretically, we could meet the seventeen-ten standard, and that's kind of how they're gonna grade these, uh, these grants. They're gonna look at how often you meet seventeen-ten now, and how often you will meet it in the future, so. On paper, it would look real good, we can actually run some numbers and see where we've been in the past, which we will, we rarely if ever meet the, the standard now. There might be some days where, if I'm at work and the deputy chief's there and it's a daytime fire, we can, we might muster enough people to meet the standard, but, uh, at nighttime and, uh, relying on other people to bring our numbers up to fifteen, it doesn't usually happen.
So is it, is that good for getting the Safer grant, or not?
Yes, that's good for getting the grant, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're looking at the highest priority are those that never meet it now, and then with the additional staffing, if you meet it a hundred or nine, ninety to a hundred percent of the time, that's their highest priority for funding, so. But most people, they look at the funding, and if they're already meeting the standard, then they're probably not gonna apply. So they don't, if anything's outside of the high priority funding, they don't, they don't get funded.
Get her done, you guys got any questions for the Chief?
Yeah, how, how do we pay for this, Chief?
Yeah, how do we pay for this? I, I'm not real sure. I'm looking at Jim for an answer here.
It says here for a period, six firefighters, the three years, about six hundred and thirty-one thousand, I assume that's over the three.
That's over the three years, yeah, the first two years were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred each year, and then the, the final year was three hundred and fifty-seven. And I think I didn't mention, but the end of the period is just like the last Safer grant. If at the end of the grant period, you're like, we can't afford this after the three years, you're, you're not obligated to retain that staffing level.
So you're, are you telling me, us, that if you get two new firefighters, you can eliminate how much overtime, is it a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, what are we spending?
This year, we're on pace, and la- last year, we were right around a hundred and seventy, we'd be about the same, a hundred and seventy thousand would be about the same this year. We could take a good chunk of that off.
A good chunk?
A good chunk. The, the year, the first year of the Sa- the last Safer grant, when we had that one, it sounds bad, that, that one person cushioned between somebody calling in sick and then using overtime, our overtime budget, our overtime actual expense that year was under our seventy thousand dollar budget.
That year, you also had a minimum staffing that was reduced to nine.
No, well, that year, we had ten, and we had, uh, went to fourteen per shift.
Weren't you lowered to nine one year?
Just for about a period of three or four months, if I remember right.
That was.
But once we got the Safer grant, we were back up to ten.
I, I increased it when you did that.
Yeah.
Because you had, that was at a point where the council had created a, you mandated that we stay at seventy thousand, uh, that fiscal year.
Yeah.
So that's how we can pay for the first two years?
Would be very close, yeah.
The third year and so forth after that is the issue.
So do you guys have any problems with them applying for the Safer grant for the six officers, or for the six?
You won't, you won't completely cover your match on that. If the first two years, the cost to us, if for six would be a hundred and.
Hundred, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
And you can probably reduce a, maybe eighty thousand, eighty to a hundred thousand out of the budget.
Right.
Uh, with overtime, so you're still gonna have a forty thousand dollars that you're gonna have to come up with.
Wow. To me, I mean.
And that's the first two years, the third year, you're gonna have to come up with three hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Or pay it back, right? So, so here's the, so here's the.
You don't, you don't want to, you don't want to accept the grant if you don't plan on going through the three year, that's for sure.
Right, but if they, if they say that, that we, if they say they're gonna give you a Safer grant, sorry, if they say they're gonna give you a Safer grant for six, for six, uh, officers, then we, we wouldn't have to say yes to all of those, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I think there are, you can, you can negotiate some on the Safer.
I mean, I'm saying, I'm saying, if we said, alright, we're talking six fire, firefighters, then when, by the time that gets down to it, and they say, alright, we'll, we'll, we'll do the six, but it's a three-year process, and we say, well, after we've gone through a budget, we can't do six, we can do four. Is that something that we can do, or, I mean, is it a six or no, and then, no deal, or?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I think what you write the grant for is what they expect you to fulfill.
But if we say we're gonna do three, then we don't eliminate any, from what I hear you say, then overtime is still gonna be the hundred and some thousand dollars.
It depends on which way you go for that on, I mean, and that's his recommendation would be that you increase your minimum staffing, and that's really how you can sell.
Yes.
The, the grant to be successful, and in that circumstance, you're not changing any.
Yeah, if you don't increase the minimum staffing at all, I mean, that will make no difference really on the seventeen-ten, meeting the standard.
Right.
Is what they're looking for.
So then if you only applied for three, then does that mean you cut in half, so we're back down to half of the hundred and thirty-seven?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So roughly seventy thousand dollars. But then where do you come up with seventy thousand dollars, if you don't eliminate any overtime?
So we don't, were you gonna say seventy? So, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, wha- whatever the approach we use, um, I'm very concerned about the staffing levels of public safety. And I know that the citizens that I've talked to feel the same way, and that, uh, if we can, if we can find a way to, uh, fund additional, uh, police officers and firefighters, we need to find it. That's, that's the message I've been receiving. They're, uh, they're very, very concerned about, uh, our situation.
So are you advocating for the whole six, or the three, or what would you suggest?
I, I'm, I'm not really ready to advocate anything yet, I want to hear the full potential of, uh, of funding and, and, I mean, where we can go. I mean, if we can't, if we can't fund it, we can't fund it, but we need, I, I want to.
I want to see the whole.
I want to see it all and hear it all, and, and, uh, I, I, I say bring the proposal forward, that there's a timeline for getting this, for, for applying for this. If, if the grant comes through and we don't have a way to fund the rest of it, then we're gonna have to turn the grant down.
That was my, that was what I was wondering, is if, if we, if we do six, and they say, alright, you're good. You know, do we have to, and I think that's important information, I think we all know that we need, that we need to apply for a Safer grant. I just don't, we don't, I, I don't know if we want to get locked in on, on six, not knowing exactly how this process is gonna play out, since it's at the very beginning, is that, is that safe to say?
Well, then you really can't say that they can go ahead and apply for this until we get to these, these budget discussions done.
But Edith, when does?
February.
February ninth.
February ninth.
February ninth.
I can, I can say right now that I, I have no problem with you failing on a Safer grant for three, for three, I've got no problem whatsoever, and if that goes through, I think we can find a way to come up with that money.
Mm-hmm.
Six, I don't know, I, I don't know if, uh, I think, I think it's, I think it's too early to say for, for me.
What do you think?
Somehow you gotta figure out how to pay for it, uh, whether you're, and that's something I don't think you're quite ready for.
Right, that's my problem.
You're at a, at the beginning of this budget process, but I think this is part of the landscape as, I mean, my notes kind of talk about three different areas for where there's this, a desire to talk about additional funding. Uh, your department here, uh, nuisance, there is a desire to see some additional, at least on this, we put together a budget for some part-time help through the, like a temporary nine-month type position. Um, sev- set aside, I don't know if it's quite that long, but set aside seventeen to twenty thousand with benefits, or overheads, social security, et cetera. You also have a desire, a significant desire, to talk about different options on the police side. And depending on the level of where your discussions go there, which you haven't even begun to have, I mean, you can have a discussion about adding one person in, in CID at a cost of one additional staff that for you all is eighty thousand-ish. So, or you could have a discussion of adding, like, two more people per shift, uh, which is eight, you know, yeah, eight people, and plus the equipment to, to outfit them, I mean, you haven't had that discussion yet. But as you go through that discussion and, and start thinking about what's your overall desire for what things would you like to see have, happen, how are you gonna accomplish that?
Yeah.
Are you willing to talk about raising a property tax fee to, to accomplish it? What you see presented in the budget right now is gonna be, um, maintaining our existing level of, of services at our existing property tax levy. Or are you gonna say that we need to offset this with reductions in costs elsewhere? And that's either gonna be in a, in equipment, in pulling more money out of, say, local option sales tax, or cutting staff from other departments, essentially, and a level of service.
Well, we need to, we need to either, either blow this a huff, or, or say we're gonna do so. I, I, I can say right now, this is what I can say, for, for me, I can say that I'm, I'm saying yes for a Safer grant for three. I can say that regardless of the budget talks, however that goes, that's what I can say tonight, right now. What are you guys, what are you guys saying?
Chief, if you apply for the grant, and you get the grant, and we determine at the time that the grant is awarded, that we can't, that we can't come up with the money, can you turn the? can you turn the grant back and it's not gonna cost us anything?
Right, we can turn down the grant before, yeah, there's no cost to that.
Then I, then I think there's no harm at all in applying for the grant.
The only hesitation you have to make a decision on is are you willing to ask, do you, do you wanna let him go ahead and apply on the six? Or do you feel more comfortable with three? But if you do the three, you gotta also know that you have less likelihood of it being approved.
Why, why is that?
Well, unless we say we're...
Unless you increase.
Unless we increase minimum staffing, in which case the, we would really, there'd be some overtime savings, but not a lot.
I'm just trying to be realistic and think, what can we do? And do we wanna continue with the same staffing that you have, or at least get you, get you some more help?
Yeah. What I can do between now and next meeting is I can, I mean, we have a good repertoire with FEMA. I can ask her about that, if that's a possibility, and let you know before next meeting.
If I understand what you're saying right, though, we actually would save more money by getting, by applying for the six rather than the three.
For the first two years, but you won't in the third year.
The fourth year is gonna go skyrocket, but, yeah, in the third year. Well, I think our job, from my perspective, the most important job we do here is public safety. So, that's gonna be the top of our priority list.
Yeah, that's why I'm anxious to look at the budget, let's get into these. Let's have you, let's have you do that for, for now. Can you bring us back that information and let us know, what, do we have to make a call and pull the trigger on that six or the three differentiate on that?
Sure.
And, uh, and then we'll, we're gonna have to make a decision, so.
So, are you gonna leave this on the agenda for next Monday?
Are you gonna, are you gonna be able to have, when are you gonna have information for us?
I'll have it before next meeting.
Okay.
So, you can pull it off the consent if you want it on the regular, and I'll talk about it again?
Yeah, that's the way to do that.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, guys. Uh, number seven, uh, resolution approving the release and termination of easements located at three thousand one Wine Guard Drive, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
I have here to show, uh, this was brought forward, um, through Huckleberry Entertainment. When they constructed the casino on their property, uh, a number of years ago, part of the requirements was to have a recreational easement. This included the water underneath the casino floor and a small detention area in front of the casino. Those are no longer required, uh, to be located there, so they've asked that, uh, the recreational easement be terminated, uh, released and terminated. Uh, the portion in yellow, uh, there is the actual recreational easement. You can see it does go underneath the building, uh, which is outlined in blue, so this would be, uh, releasing and terminating that easement. Serves no purpose to the city. Uh, this is where they're planning to construct their new hotel parking lot area. It was just a requirement to have a casino on land based at the time, which isn't a requirement any longer.
Okay. Do we got any problems? Were you gonna say something, or?
Since the water isn't there any longer, the easement serves very little purpose.
Alrighty, that, number, number eight. Resolution amending fees and charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course.
Staff did a review of, annual review of fees, uh, and we'll have more coming forward from other departments in the future. But from the golf course, uh, looking at our fees, uh, for season passes, uh, cart rental, as well as daily rates. Trying to stay competitive, balancing, uh, revenues with operations, as well as, uh, looking what other commu-, or, uh, courses do. Uh, one of our more common, uh, comparisons is Shafer Memorial Golf Course. Um, and we are, uh, in line above some of their costs, uh, slightly below in some of the others, uh, but on par overall with theirs. But it is a increase, uh, primarily the ten dollars to annual fees and a dollar, uh, from a lot of the daily rates.
We're good?
Do we have a report on how we did this summer?
I'll have that with my presentation.
Alright.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, good. Talked about that moves coming.
You'd all prefer to pay more, I mean.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, next round of set dates, the public hearing?
By the time you play out there that many times in the summertime, it makes it worthwhile.
Alright. Number A, consideration of general obligation corporation purpose loan agreement and the principal amount not to exceed ten million and to approve preliminary official statement. Anything on that?
Uh, again, this is to provide two point two million dollars for the police department remodel. The majority of the remainder, uh, probably in about the five and a half million dollar range, will be flood protection improvements. And then three projects, uh, the Division Street Rise Match, local match, that was associated with Silgan. The Agency Street Rise Local Match, which was assoc-, is associated with GE. And then doing Agency Street Improvements, not only on the west side, but additionally on the east side of Highway sixty-one. The matches on those, uh, first two, the Division Street, the Silgan was in the, the four hundred thousand dollar range. Uh, the GE was about five hundred thousand. And the preliminary estimate for what we'd have to pay on, uh, Agency Street, Street Improvements east of Highway sixty-one after the grant for the traffic signalization was, uh, one million six hundred and sixty-six thousand. There may be a little bit of, as, over the course of the next couple of weeks, there still may be a little bit of wiggle back and forth between what we set aside for the flood improvements and towards those TIF projects, whether we use an internal loan to cover, uh, the Silgan is one that we're still talking about. But that's the concept of what those, that ten million, ten million dollars will be used for. Total estimated when, when we brought this forward with, a couple of weeks ago, was nine point eight million dollars.
Okay.
As we move forward, there will be a spot where, uh, Travis will be at one of these upcoming meetings, I think in February, uh, when we actually hold a, hold the hearing or when we go to approve, I'm not sure which one, but.
Okey-do. I'm spending money. Number B, consideration of general obligation refunding loan agreement and the principal amount not to exceed, uh, seven million, three hundred thousand dollars and to approve preliminary official statement.
This is for the...
Is it two thousand thirteen bond issue?
Two thousand eleven bond issue, uh, refinancing on that. The savings that's needed on that, uh, is really close, depending, and we'll just have to wait as we move forward in this process to see if the savings hold up. Uh, depending on, it really depends on what the interest rate market environment is when we get to that date. But right now, the savings are satisfactory to justify moving forward, uh, to look at refinancing on that for savings. And just back on the sales tax TIF portion of the borrowing, uh, just a reminder for the public, that's set up, uh, re, the repayments on that to be paid for out of this sales tax collections that we get from the state that, that they provided to us, the twenty-six million that, that they provided to us for this project.
Okay, let's keep, uh, let's keep it rolling. C, uh, we also have a, a hearing set for consideration of an ordinance amending section one seventy point seven five signs of chapter one seventy zoning codes of the Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland, you wanna?
Well, more details at the following meeting, but, uh, request, uh, change the sign height and sign area by a local business, so we're bringing those requests forward.
Okay. Alright, um, we still have, uh, Otter Island cabin leases?
Uh, we had a memo and then the actual lease language, uh, passed out before the meeting. Uh, page two of the lease, uh, you see in yellow, number fourteen and fifteen, those are new additions to the lease language. Uh, and then the memo summarizes, um, just the, um, right by the city to require cabins to be either upgraded or removed from the site. Uh, this would be with the new lease agreements, uh, those come up in July first of, uh, twenty seventeen. Uh, so we'd send out notice to the leases of the changes to the, uh, language within the lease agreement. Uh, and then, uh, what the results would be for some of the cabins that are deemed substandard at this point. But, um, this gives some, uh, teeth to the language to allow us to do, uh, require some repairs or, uh, not allow, uh, releasing of the cabin site to some owners. They desire not to make the improvements.
Good. What role will we play in this? I mean, are we going out looking at this situation to decide?
We, we would have to do an annual, just visual inspection, um, of the site.
As it mentioned, as he mentions in, uh, the, from the attorney, this, the, the authority would be there that we could, with the language that's included in the, the proposed change to the language within the lease, you would have the right to ask for an, an internal inspection if you needed to, to ju-, to determine if there was a structural deficiency that was, that put the structure in imminent danger.
Okay. Good.
If you're okay with what you see there, that can come forward on this next Monday's meeting. If, because you didn't have it out there in council packet ahead of time and you wanna have it, make sure that you've had more time for that to be out in the public or for your own thoughts. It can go on the next work set as an approval of an amendment for this, uh, on the next work session.
That'd be my preference.
Had to be my preference. That was good, but you guys are...
Mine too. I just, I think we need to look at an increasing that leases as well. If we're gonna have some, uh, potentially additional responsibilities that we're gonna take on to, um, uh, satisfy these requirements, I think we need to make sure that we're covering that additional cost. I wouldn't have a problem with, uh, uh, doubling the lease. I think two hundred and fifty dollars is, is, uh, pretty reasonable for a fairly healthy chunk of land and privacy and recreational and, and, uh, and for someone from outside the community, it's, uh, twelve hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a month isn't asking too much either.
What do you think?
I love it.
You love it? Hey, if you love it, I like it. Alright. Okay, then.
Hold up on it.
Okay, we are down to number five, uh, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget.
Yeah, six fifteen. If I read the eight pages I put in there, that'll take about an hour.
Okay.
Anybody want me to really do that?
I can read it.
We're gonna be talking about this on Thursday.
Uh, I would wanna point out, uh, within here, um, to think about some of the goals that I've listed there in the budget, the timely communication, try to, of issues in a fair and open manner, try to balance needs of all community members. We're on track. We're not gonna get, I don't think, to fourteen, or fifteen percent this next year. But we're still increasing each year, but this is not by a tremendous amount. If we're at fourteen point four percent at the end of sixteen, um, that's growing right now on projection of maybe fourteen eight for this next budget year, so we're still moving forward on that, but we're, it's very gradual, getting up to that fifteen percent. You know, things that have occurred over the last cup, over the last year, we've mentioned a couple of the big things for some of the costs that weren't anticipated, uh, with some of these, um, storm events this last fall that have really hit at our ability to do things. You had a request to white box a depot, I think is a, a major item that's still, that's sitting out there. When that was presented as a proposal, I think the, the developer talked about potentially seventy thousand as a cost in that range. As Nick put together com- cost components, he had pieces that added to... What's up? You wanna come forward and just mention that?
Did you just say two?
I thought it was gonna end up at a hundred and eight thousand, but...
The, the total dollar figure that I came to an estimate to was a hundred and fifty-one and two hundred. So, one fifty-two is about.
Now, he's throwing a twenty percent contingency in on that, but as you mentioned with the...
Based on the, the, the great room renovation and all the amount of change orders that we've run into on that project, I feel it's only safe to put a twenty percent contingency on that. I would really hate to get into a project like that and all of a sudden hit something that you couldn't anticipate, especially with bringing all new gas, all new electrical, all new water over there, just given the age of the building. Yeah, so, I, I felt twenty percent was, was pretty safe, but, so, one fifty-two is what the number I came to.
Based off the discussions that we'd had, uh, in the fall and where the council, council's direction was to bring something back for your consideration, uh, my goal was to have that as something that we were looking to fund out of local option sales tax. And in fact, as I wrote this letter, I had it in there, uh, but that was, Nick didn't give me that hundred and fifty thousand until Thursday afternoon, and the council packet went out Thursday noon. I had, I had a hundred and twenty in there, and, you know, thirty thousand, is it a huge deal? Well, it depends on...
It does when we've got...
Now, the, the part that, the other part that I had going on with my thought process, um, is combined in some of the other notes in here. We've seen some of our revenues in other areas. Uh, over the course of the last couple of weeks, we got our numbers in from hotel motel for the first quarter. Hotel motel tax, uh, the first quarter was thirty-five thousand dollars lower than the comparable quarter from the year before. Over the course of a year's time, uh, the, as a percentage of revenue, that would put us about a hundred and twenty thousand lower total uh, over the course of a year. Within my budget, I had it to be about forty thousand lower, and that's how I was trying to build a, a CIP plan out and had that, had the, the white boxing of the depot included in that. But as I finished up the week, I just didn't feel that was responsible to, I don't feel comfortable with that revenue stream that I had. Last year, we brought in nine hundred and ninety-two thousand in hotel motel tax. I'd budgeted nine hundred and fifty for this year, and then in being nine fifty again next year, I don't feel comfortable with that. Right now, we're on track to be at a eight hundred and seventy thousand. If we have that kinda shortfall this year and next year, we've now are in a position where if we built a CIP on that higher level and we don't hit it, uh, we're now having to cut items out of, uh, being funded. And if you go forward with the white boxing, you've already committed to a developer. I don't see how you cut that one out, so it's almost all gonna fall on Eric's projects that he's trying to fund out of hotel motel. I felt more, so I, I lowered, uh, this year's projected revenue to nine hundred thousand and next year's to nine hundred. That's still higher than what our first quarter tracked on, but at least closer to that number. Uh, I felt much more comfortable with that being, uh, what we built a budget off of. So, as you see the CIP presented on Thursday, the, the white boxing is not one of the projects I'm recommending uh, for this next budget year. It's not the only project that I have that I, that was requested, uh, that I pushed off. We, I could have, I can, looking at the projects that were requested and trying to figure out where is funding match, I could, I can work that in, in twenty twenty-one. Well, I did that to some of Eric's projects too, uh, that he had requested for this next year and pushed them off to twenty twenty-one. As Eric presents his budget and, and some of the things that he'd like to have accomplished, one that he has in there is a project that he's not asking for any city funds on, um, is some playground improvements. He's looking to do a major playground improvement down in, uh, Crepo?
Dankworth.
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 One of those parks.
We oughta go out there sometime.
Yeah, our kids use this park. He's looking at a project of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a major, uh, destination location with, and he's building that with a contingency of no city funds going into it. I, I have a much more, and so it, it isn't gonna occur till he gets the funding. I feel a whole lot more comfortable about using a hotel motel towards that personally.
I agree.
But, again, within the context, this is a community, and when you're looking at, that's one of the first things in, in this list, um, is make sure that you balance the requ-, the needs of everyone within the community. And, and you ultimately are making those decisions, so wherever you end up going, that's fine. Um, as you, as we move through this process and are looking at these items, uh, that the different departments are requesting, the white boxing is still... departments are requesting, the white boxing is still something that sits out there.
So you moved the 120 into some other different project then?
I changed it to 150, and I moved it, yeah, oh, yeah. I, so I, I moved the, the, the white, the white boxing out to 2021. Well, that 120 that, that I'd had set to, to do that, when I took 50,000 of funding out for this year and next year, that's 100,000 of it. I moved one of Eric's projects that I had pushed off a year back to the year where it was originally designed to do, that was asking for 20,000 of funds. So...
Thursday, we're talking CIP, right?
So is, but you're, you do kind of, it's, it's hard to communicate the flavor. Eric has, I think, seven different projects that, as he requested them, I moved them back anywhere from one year to three years. I think he had two of them that were moved back three years because they were higher dollar amounts and were harder to do.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll get into that, but if you, as, as you move through that process, if there is a desire ultimately from the council to say, you know, we really do want to see the white boxing occur, the items that you're going to be putting those in competition with are essentially going to be the projects and the equipment for the Recplex, the golf course, et cetera, that, that Eric is going to be presenting during his portion of the budget. So just keep that in mind as you have, as you think through whether you want to do something there or not.
Jim, we hired you to be able to do what we want to do, when we want to do it, and you're supposed to make it work.
Agreed. I'll try my best on that.
I'm thinking he's got how many balls?
It's in the...
He's supposed to be able to juggle a thousand whole thing.
In terms of budget, Stephanie, is that out on OpenGov yet? When is, when you're looking? We had, we're still making changes today to get categories to match.
We're hoping to have it done today, so hopefully, she's saying hopefully tomorrow you're, it'll be out in OpenGov. If not, it'll be out there by Thursday. Right now, Stephanie is working on for Thursday, getting the CIP laid out, because that'll be presented on Thursday with, with all the different projects by year. The other part of that, I asked her to make sure that, that we look at, is, is showing how we're using local option sales tax and hotel motel tax over the course of the next few years. So you can see the CIP in context to how those funds are used for other items as well.
Yep. Okay. But your notes there, when do I see that?
It's in your packet.
But you have a copy of it?
It is in the packet, so.
Yes.
I didn't get all the way to it.
Okay. There's...
She has some numbers in the packet already too, at the end.
What does she have in the packet?
The general fund.
Okay, yeah, that, we had the, within the, the general fund, it had the net, or the gross expenditures for the general fund, the gross revenues for the general fund, and then the net. The net shows after, for example, like with the ambulance, you have your gross expenditures and then they collect the ambulance revenues, the net page shows the difference between the two. I think that's 100, well, I guess I don't remember what it is. It's typically in that 150,000 range, net cost to the city for that department as an example. Other departments, police department has a lot less to net against it. In fact, like the patrol would have, well, it'd have some that would net, nets against it for the reimbursements from the school, for the two positions in the school. So you'll see a variety, you'll, essentially what that's trying to get at is when, when you're paying your general property tax dollars, those, those net costs are what you're, you're covering. And, and then there's a percentage on that net sheet that shows out of your property tax dollars, what, essentially, what's the percentage that's used towards police, fire, et cetera? And you'll see in there, the, the net that's used towards police, fire is 55% of the, of your, your property tax dollar.
53.
53?
Well, Matt.
I'm, I'm just guessing because I haven't looked at this this year. It's pretty, pretty standard, and, and you're not going to find that that's a whole lot different from one community to another. It's pretty typical to see about this kind of percentage. The things that we did try to do is to maintain our existing staffing, as I mentioned, and to continue our property tax levy as it is. And we're able to do that this year. That would be the fourth year in a row, but again, you have three areas where there are some significant desires to see some changes made. And as we move through the budget meetings over the next three weeks and the different departments present their budgets, my guess is you're going to have some, have to have some give and take in regards to what do you think is the appropriate, appropriate level of services? Do you want to see some alterations made? I, I don't really know what else to put out there for context, but as you see, we're able, we are able to continue to move forward on the same basis as what we've had. It's a matter of how you want to make adjustments to, for where our current situation is.
Sure.
And I think my staff would be happy that I did that in 10 minutes and didn't read through it. You have something else, Nick?
This is going to be reminiscent of five years ago.
I apologize, you'll take 10 minutes. The M A S L is currently on the consent agenda. I had planned for H R Green to come next week to more of a presentation. Would you like to move it to the regular agenda?
If they do come, we can just, just move it from the consent to the regular.
Yeah.
Okay.
Their regular agenda is so short anyway, it was not a huge deal.
Is there a desire to have handouts for you guys? Like tonight, would you have wanted to seen this, these numbers handed out to you? Or, I mean, I know you mostly have your computers, so we could do it either way, but...
I tried to pull up my computer at home, and I don't know why, I got down to page 68 or something, and then everything stopped, and I thought...
I mean, like for Thursday, we'll have the CIP. It, I think it's eight pages. The hotel motel will be summarized on one, last will be summarized on one, but if...
Going forward, I, I would like to have something in my head.
So would I.
Okay.
I would too, because I had a hell of a time fighting this tonight.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's why I'm asking, so we can be prepared. We'll have the handouts. They'll also be in the packet for the public, they can pull it up, and so I'll get copies for everybody going forward.
I probably won't even bring my computer on Thursday, I'll just, whatever you guys hand out to me is what we'll do.
Is that worth, yeah. I mean, Rhonda will have a presentation, and then we won't have, unless she, but that will just be like a PowerPoint, but if we have the numbers, we'll have that printed out too, so.
That'd be great.
Okay.
I would like to.
Okay, great.
Other than that, that's really kind of the context, so yes, it will be me talking and then Rhonda this, on Thursday.
Forno, you're buying food, right? You got food on Thursday night? Thanks for volunteering. Man, you're all right. Notre Dame fans, they're not so bad.
I've got some Hershey's Kisses on my desk downstairs. I can bring those up.
Nobody wants any kisses from you.
Be nice.
Shelley does.
Well, yeah, I didn't get a face that, except for Shelley.
Watch out, here comes the chief.
Uh-oh.
In his packet.
Kind of a quick question on how you want to structure this. Kind of what I was planning on doing at my budget review is presenting the budget as is, with 43 people, and as Mr. Forno pointed out, there's where we're at. This can be, what I want to say, this can be afforded, or this is where we're at, and then give the other departments, let them finish up with theirs, and then what I'd really like to put forward is a strategic plan. If we add officers, if we add two, if we add four, if we add six, not only what it's going to cost, but how we're going to utilize those. I think it's very important that it's kind of a picture, but to try to do that at the same time we're doing the budget review, I think it might be a little bit overwhelming. So I'm just kind of putting that forward. Is there any possible way I could, more towards the end, slip the plan in there versus trying to do it all at once and overwhelming you?
I have no issue with that.
I'm just trying to figure out the best way to bring this forward.
Jim, is that going to be a problem for you?
I think the biggest thing that, for you all, is how you're going to get it done soon enough that you can have actual time to talk about it before you have to approve a final budget. Because you're, you're going to have to be at a position where you can approve a final budget by February 10-ish.
But I mean, we...
Would there be a possibility of making, maybe making another?
But we can set us, we can set an additional meeting that's specifically around...
Yeah, or just follow up with somebody that, I mean, I'm just trying to give every department, you know, a chance to get, at least get through with their budget review, and then, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm not talking about putting us off two weeks or three weeks. I mean, just, just to a point that it's kind of a separate discussion. I just think that that, you'll gain more information from that, and what it's going to cost, and how we can implement this.
I'm just wondering, aren't we still going to, we're still going to want to see figures on, I mean, right away, we're still going to want to see what one extra man's going to do to our budget.
Oh, sure, and we can briefly discuss that, briefly. That, that won't take hardly any time at all. And maybe to have that in your back of your mind, I understand what you're saying, I just...
Then I didn't...
Trying to put it all in one, I don't know if that's, if that works. I'm not saying I can't, it, this is going to be a long discussion, it's going to be a lot of information.
It works for me, for you to do it at the same time, Chief, I, I...
Okay.
That's just me personally.
I don't know if that, you're, you're set on, on your own night by yourself right now?
No, I'm with somebody else. I don't remember that.
With Don?
With Don.
Oh, yeah.
You're the one that has your own timer up here. But no, and I, I can do it that way too, so I just wanted to put it out there to see what, what you expected, or what you want.
I guess I'd rather see the whole picture at once, Chief, but...
Okay.
I would too.
Yep, I would too.
Wonderful. I got her. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Don may end up getting pushed off, depending on how that looks to look.
Well, it's fine. I mean, we're starting at 3:30, how, what are we going to be here, Tom?
One of the things that I try not to do with this group is go beyond two hours. I've been around other councils that prefer, that are okay with longer. I've been around councils that, that were able to make a meeting last seven minutes. This group is, looks like about two hours, and once it gets to an hour and a half, really, you start to, to, it just, every group dynamic has a little, it operates a little differently. I'm not saying anything...
No, I think you hit it right on the head, brother. I think you, wait for attention to detail. I think you hit it right on the head. We're about a two-hour group, by the line.
Yeah, I agree.
So we don't, I try not to get more information on there. I don't want more of this than, than what we can get done in that kind of timeframe.
Preach as long as the bottom can stand.
Sometimes, brother. Anything else? Anything else? Let's close comments. Mr. Teslin, any comments? Council lady, any comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, this, interesting conversation today with two different people at two different times. The first one, when we were walking this morning, and I walked with the group out at the mall, they were talking about being at, at Walmart, and this young lady approaching them and saying that she needed money for gas to get back to Mount Pleasant. And then about an hour later, a relative of mine calls and says that there were two gentlemen at Hy-Vee that was asking him for money for gas to get, so they could get back to Mount Pleasant. But you got to know my brother and his attitude, of course, he said, hell no, and he wrote down their license number, called the P D. Well, the P D hunted them down, and they ended up with, one of them, the one that was driving got arrested because he was a habitual offender or something, didn't have a license. But the, the point is, people are out there saying that they need money for gas to get back to Mount Pleasant.
I've heard that before too.
Don't, don't give them any money, it's a scam. They're just trying to get money.
I was just going to say, I need some money to get back to Mount Pleasant.
It's a scam. Don't, don't believe it for a minute, so. That's, and I, I didn't ask them to reveal any information, just part of the co, two different conversations, and so we know it's out there.
The only thing I've got, again, I just want to remind you, we're going into budget talks, you guys know this, the Hawkeye lady's here, she'll be writing about it tomorrow. Get your comments in early, get your comments in early. Don't wait till the midnight hour, that's not fair to us, and then you want to get mad because we're not going to go there. We're going to grapple it out. If you have any issues, please get them to us, we're going to try to do our best. That's about all I've got. Mayor Proctor?
I'm good, thanks.
I'm good, thanks.
See you, manager.
I've talked enough.
Yeah, he's said quite a bit.
All right. Well, we'll be back here on Thursday. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
3:30, right?
3:30.